Okay, good. All right, well, it's 6:35. Due to technical difficulties, we started a little bit late, but we're ready to roll. So I want to call the order, meeting number 1865 of the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. We are located in the John Daly Room at Town Hall, as well as on Zoom platform. We have a quorum. We have all our regular members plus an alternate present. Do we have any added agenda items?
We do not.
Okay. There was no legal notice?
Yep. Yes.
Okay.
We just started.
So this brings us to the public participation portion of our meeting. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on a topic that is not on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone online that would like to speak on a topic that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay, hearing none, I'll proceed. Approval of minutes. We have the minutes of our last meeting, December 12th, regular meeting minutes. Does anyone have any alterations, corrections, suggestions?
I'd ask that you look at line 194. And do you think it needs? Where it says it does not conform to the town's open space parcels and that this one would definitely, I think you need the word "not" meet those criteria. Isn't that, what do you think?
Uh, trying to remember exactly what, how this discussion was going on.
I think we were.
Maybe talking about that it was, it was going to be restricted, non-developable.
And you said it was not confirmed the open space. It meets the criteria, then it doesn't conform. I think it was your intention.
I don't know, it's not clear to me what it's saying there. But I think the conversation was about, we would never have taken that property as open space in lieu of the fee today.
I got you, yeah.
And so that's why I was thinking.
So we're going to add the word "not"?
I don't know, you said it.
Yeah.
That's what I think you were saying.
That's who we were discussing is that this parcel, under today's definitions, right, we would, we would not have accepted it.
So that's why I was thinking a "not" might go here, but I don't want to put words in your mouth.
No, I.
Just struggling with the minutes that was written.
Okay, no, I agree with that. Anything else?
In, on line 218 and 245, you spelled my name, I think you used using spell check. Oh. But I don't care, you don't have to fix that.
Well, let's.
It's not substantial.
218 and 245.
I was more worried about getting the discussion of that.
Parcel.
Parcel.
Okay.
For that for you.
Okay. Any, anyone else have any items with the minutes? If not, then I'll entertain the motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the addition of the word "not" between "definitely" and "need" on line 194 and correcting the spelling of my last name on line 218 and 245.
There's a motion on the table to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Minutes are approved. David. And we have four affirmatives and two extensions. Okay. Receipt of applications, we have two. We have PZ 2024-01, the town of East Windsor, a zoning map amendment to include the new warehouse point design district. And we have PZ 2024-02, site plan modification for parking lot at 142, 140, 140 rear, South Main Street. The owner applicant is Island View Farms LLC. Both of those will be heard at a later meeting. Performance bonds, actions, permit extensions, road acceptance, we have none. Continued public hearing, we have none. New public hearing, we have none. So we proceed to old business. It is a 824 referral for vacant property at Morris Road, lot 017-67-009, continued from December 12th. So on the table, we should have a draft motion that also talks about the findings and how we came to this decision. Is everybody in agreement? Is there anything else that we need to discuss on this? Okay. Dan, is there anything additional you need from us then?
No, just wanted to review that since our last meeting, we did some research on the general statutes, regulations, and what would trigger a re-subdivision and the changing of the map by transferring the open space would do that. And we wouldn't want to trip into losing open space that's required and with these transfers. And so we talked about it the last meeting, be in lieu of open space, potentially being an avenue to not kind of come out whole and after every subdivision application or another open space parcel, and maybe one that was contiguous with other open space so that we would get away from the small slivers of land. So just wanted to review that for you.
Okay. Well, if nobody has anything else to add, I'll entertain the motion for the negative referral.
I'll make a motion to make a negative referral for Connecticut General Statute Section 8-24 and recommend the East Windsor Board of Selectmen not transfer a vacant town property known as MBL 17-67-9 to Loriann Ross, owner of adjacent lot at 10 Morris Road. Finding that the practice of transferring open space land that has been deeded to the town as part of any subdivision approval is counter to the objectives of the subdivision regulations and the plan of conservation and development. Any such transfer would require re-subdivision application to be submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval. It is imperative that the town is made whole in any such open space transfer, which, which would include the offsetting of the open space lost as a result of the property transfer in order to satisfy the requirements of the original subdivision approval. This could take the form of an alternative open space parcel on or off-site for a fee in lieu of open space.
Okay, there was a motion for a negative referral. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You recommend a negative referral. Okay. New business. PZ 2023-27, 52 Main Street, modification of an approved site plan for parking spaces located at 52 Main Street, map 61, block 5, block 41, and we tease the five zone. You're going to have to forgive me on pronunciation here. Applicant is Yanell Quadir.
Quadir.
Thank you. You may present your case, sir.
Do you need that? You can come right up here and.
You have a chair in. Basically, we're just requesting to add spots in the back. Right here. Do you want me to count the numbers or? So we already have approval for the one in the front, and we're expanding to the back, or we're just adding spots to the back?
Okay.
So the site plan modification came out of the car suite, the automotive business suite that Danielle conducted through town. And the idea here is to get some construct around where parking is occurring and having a document so that everyone understands what the site layout should be. The fire marshal has signed off on the layout that's before you now. And it's pretty straightforward. It gives us the opportunity to seek compliance to this plan. This is a control point.
Sir, does these added spaces satisfy your need that you now have adequate parking for all your vehicles?
Black ones in the front, but they say they can't have them, so they don't meet the guidelines. So yeah, this is perfectly fine. Okay.
Does anyone else have any questions from the applicant?
There's an existing house. Um, and it looks like the business parking is very close to that existing house. Does that impact the tenants of the existing house? They have all those cars lined up in front of it.
I own the house.
Do you live in that street?
Don't have too far to go to work.
Go down that.
I got a lot of guys complaining all the time, like, boss, we can't get to work. What are you complaining about? The ones are fine.
It's making it better than what it was.
Yeah. Dave, Stacy, anyone else have any questions for the applicant?
Do you need to worry about turning radiuses for?
The fire marshal's already signed off.
He's happy with all of it?
Yeah.
Yeah. You need simulations throughout? We've been at it for a while.
Yeah. A little back and forth.
Yeah, yeah, so I think finally.
Okay, good.
So just, just a quick question. I understand the state owns this portion right here. And the guideline says, I believe, you have to be 18 feet behind or 17 feet. So there is absolutely no way, any exception around it, like this is set in stone?
Yeah, that's the required setback.
Yeah, the state, if they want to widen the road or something.
Yeah.
So you can't stay right away.
Is there a spot? There's something called Riverview Plaza Management LLC. And a 10-foot setback, is there a parking spot here in the setback?
At the field, I think.
Is that a parking spot? Or is 84 the last parking spot? Or is that a parking spot? Okay, that's the last spot, so why?
It's.
Okay. That's why the, yep.
Yeah, and then she goes to the 588, then knocks that building down, it gets the sort of thing.
Okay. Everyone else satisfied?
Good.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Okay, then, nothing else to ask, and I'll entertain a motion on this application.
I'll make a motion to approve PZC 2023-27, 57 South Main Street, the request for site plan modification from 18 parking spaces to 91 parking spaces for an existing business.
Yeah, there's a motion on the table to approve the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Unanimous, application is approved.
Good luck.
Thank you, good luck, Richard, thank you.
You're good. Thank you.
Have a great night.
Hey, under other business, we have a review of a POCD survey questions.
We want to get started on our revisions. And just so you're aware, I put a, an article in, it's going to be in the February by Village Voice, kind of kicking off. We're going to revise the POCD and we want your input. So Mike and I have put together a list of questions. Run through them that we're thinking would make a good survey start. I also, I don't know if I emailed these to you, I will, I scanned them. The results of the 2014 survey that was done, very similar, similar questions. So I'll, I'll send those out to the commissioners, and Mike and I will go through and see if there's questions we want to dovetail into these. Mike speak to the mechanics of how the survey's going to work. He's the man in the.
Um, I'll try to speak without breaking into cough. So there's actually two separate surveys. One is a community survey, which will go out to the general public. And then I think as we talked about, one of the things that we decided would be important is to try to get a cross-section of the business community. They, they are the, present the biggest impact from a development standpoint, because they're the ones doing the developing, but also the grand list mostly comes from commercial property owners, but frequently they aren't really plugged into these types of plans. So one of the surveys is a business-only survey, which tries to get to some of the things that they might be focusing on and some of their more specific concerns. So the plan is to do that separately just to see if there's anything that we can glean from them. The, the other thing that I will say is, in the original survey, we had had some additional questions. The previous survey with the previous POCD had more questions. People don't want to take 25-question surveys. I just completed a survey in another town. It was six questions, and we only had a 75% completion rate. So we're losing one out of four people because they don't want to finish it. So we tried to keep the questions really concise in that we, we know the information we're going to pull from the answers to that question, rather than just asking basic demographic and other things that don't really tell us very much, okay? You know, people that live in a single-family home feel differently about this question than people that live in an apartment. We're not going to make a zoning regulate, we can't really make a decision based on that. So we eliminated some questions that you'll see in other surveys and may have seen in other stuff the town has done. Because I don't think we're going to draw up much of a conclusion from that, and we want to keep the survey short so people actually take it. So we reviewed some of the previous survey stuff and then some other town surveys, and I pulled some of the business surveys from some, some COVID stuff and things that other agencies in other states and jurisdictions, even at the county level, to just try to see what we can pull from it. But this is sort of draft one.
Draft one, and we didn't do too much on, on housing because we just did the Affordable Housing Plan and did a survey with that.
Yeah.
Was it, was it intentional or by mistake? Anything about education on a dispense basis?
It certainly wasn't intentional.
I mean, and I think it's tough because the P and Z doesn't have, we can't put our thumb on the scale too much with that. We could certainly.
One of the, my experience in learning back, people come to the community and look at their school system and their school system, and the availability of power, makes a big decision whether they come to this community. Now, nowhere in this whole thing that either one is or anything that you about education.
I think we could add that to, we could add that to six. I mean, we, we include good education in, in community amenities for why people continue to live.
Yeah, there's one I just looked to in the 2014 survey. Where do your children attend school? And it goes through whether public school in East Windsor, a magnet school, some private, some public.
It could be like almost on, on the six or expanded upon number seven.
Yeah, we, I think it fits, I think adding something to number six would, it would be fine to be, to add that as an option. I took this one.
When do you plan this to go live?
On our schedule that we put together, we have it in February. Or if saying we're starting now, we have it in the second month. And it would run the second, third month of the revision.
And, and the business survey is a great idea. I've never done that before. Most people in business, obviously, they don't get, it's not personal, it's business.
I don't, I don't think anybody does. I couldn't find an example of a business survey done by any Connecticut town for a POCD.
That's a great, this is personal to a lot of people. The business can tell exactly what's going on and what they need.
So that kind of gets us the flavor of the town. Do you also have a separate list that all that you've been maintaining of as things have come up that you probably should address through the POCD?
Certainly housing and solar. I think those are the two hot buttons that I've seen and.
Specifically, that's exactly what I was thinking because I watched the video of the Siting Council, and they had specifically mentioned that we had scenic routes or things to that nature and specified.
Well, and they, they they asked because we pointed to them.
So we.
That we aspire to have them, and so they were, their staff person was, but she didn't pass the ordinance. So that's something to.
Include in the next.
What can we do to kind of position ourselves?
Facilitate that, okay.
A little better.
Yeah. Yeah, so those are issues, and certainly when I talk to folks that come in about what does East Windsor need, it's housing to bring more children, to increase the population at our schools, to like, it's all, it's all, yes. So bring, bring the children and more will happen.
Twenty years ago, they were trying to stop that. There's too many kids, we had too many kids. Now we're down to like 67, 70 kids per class.
Yeah. And so we could do some demographics for the next discussion we have on the POCD here, just pull our, where are we against our peers and maybe look at what they're doing.
We could certainly look back at like, how many housing units were added between 2000 and 2010, what the enrollment was, and if we wanted to increase the enrollment in the same rate, how many housing units would we have to add?
Yeah.
Because we have to actually add, I mean, your, the average household size is what, 2.3? Something like that. So even if you add 5,000 housing units, you're not going to have 5,000 children.
Right.
So you, you know, there's a multiplier effect.
So we've had, we've had a fair amount of age-restricted housing, so that usually doesn't factor into the school system either.
I think it's getting, letting him go to three students in the school system.
Yeah, that's about right. I mean, it makes sense.
Well, like the mansions, Frank, everybody's fighting the mansions, and they're all worried about school kids. There's like three kids in the mansion, three or four.
And when Calamar comes online, there'll be zero.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all.
It'd be interesting, at least from my perspective, how many residents have students that go to school out of our system? There are quite a few that I know, just personally in town.
Yeah.
That send their kids to Northeast Catholic, to all or except East Windsor.
We can put that question from the 2014 survey in. It asks just what you're saying, and we can put that, put that in there. Yeah.
Is it, is it appropriate to ask the size of the household?
Yes, they'll come.
Yeah.
They're pretty much asking anything.
Yeah.
I think we asked, I mean, not that we got a lot of responses, but I think we asked that.
If our demographic meets the 2.3 average or not, or if we have a higher.
Yeah, the Affordable Housing Plan, I think we asked the average household size, but.
The right track. And this will strictly just be online, there's not going to be any home mailers or anything like that?
We can try to push it out like we did the Affordable Housing Plan, where we do it through the BOE.
The, yeah, the Board of Education Backpack Stuffers.
Yeah.
It might be a scan, you know.
QR code.
QR code.
Yeah.
To get folks doing it. If we have workshops here and we publicize them and people come, they could either fill it out on paper or maybe through their phone. There's different avenues to get the information.
Okay.
So, and the other thing is, I'm going to put together a questionnaire for the different commissions in town to get their opinion to add. Where do we want to be?
Yeah. It's, it gets mentioned a lot, our POCD.
Right.
Yeah.
We definitely should get a fair amount of attention and try to get as much input as we can.
If you think of anything else, just write me an email and I'll.
When does the Five Village Voice go?
It's coming out in February.
Like the first, early, early?
I honestly am not certain. I know I had to have it done like.
Three months ago?
Last week, and I did it over the weekend to get it in today.
I would probably launch this survey after that.
Yes.
In theory, people will be going to the website or.
Yeah.
So we, so we have about a month.
Yeah, and that was the other thing is, we're going to have a webpage that's just the POCD revision so folks can track where we're at and look at documents and have a link to the survey and try and get as much feedback as we can get. So people feel heard and they can see it in print.
Okay.
All right.
So under correspondence, we received an email from CROG about the regional planning commission appointments.
So very timely, right? Looking at the surveys, the Capital Region CROG is asking for appointments from the town, and the Planning and Zoning Commission appoint representative and a alternate to attend its quarterly meetings.
Joey should go to those.
Yeah.
Remember? Go ahead, sorry.
Um. And so they put this deadline on there.
And
February first.
February first. So if the commission has anyone who's interested in participating and potentially an alternate too, if there's two of you that want to do it, it would have to be also approved by the Board of Selectmen.
So, part, part of the letter also states that it's going to be via Zoom only, so you don't need to attend in, in person. Seven PM and it has four dates, March twenty-first, June eighteenth, September nineteenth, November twenty-first.
That's a lot easier than it used to be.
Yeah.
So.
Right.
And then, you know, we might give some insight too, because they're updating the regional plan of conservation and development.
So I guess if anybody has an interest in it, let, let Dan know. And
Yeah.
To forward it to the Board of Selectmen for
Get on the agenda for next meeting if folks are interested.
Kind of be interested.
Yeah.
Not hard. Turn your computer.
And we did receive a second piece of correspondence. It was from the Connecticut Siting Council, a notification that docket number five nineteen for the Verizon application for cell tower located eleven Chamberlain Road is going to be, they're going to have a hearing on it. And I'm trying to see the dates of the hearing here.
February twenty-seven?
February twenty-seven.
Two P M. And a public comments session at six thirty P M. If you want to speak, you have to sign up. So I put this out on the meeting materials on the web, so we have some residents who are active, they want to voice.
You know, and there's a whole instruction page included that explains everything on how to, how to register and
So they're basically, they're basically looking to knock down the old tower and put a new one up.
They're leaving the water tower.
Oh, they're leaving it there.
It's just not structurally sound for the equipment.
They're not going to take it down. With the equipment, they're going to take it off it, obviously.
I'm assuming they'll dismantle, take their equipment off, but they're, they're building a new tower.
Next, on the same property.
That old one, rickety.
Yeah, they don't want to put anything else on.
Don't blame them. The tower was put up in like nineteen thirty-two, probably.
How far do you have to be from a cell tower to get a five G signal?
I don't know, I can't get it here.
I can't get it at my house either, so I was thinking maybe change the road.
Might get better.
Yeah.
Get me a better signal, because I have like zero bars most of the time.
That's where I'm at, in here.
Okay. We have no reason for an executive session, so does anyone have anything else that they'd like to bring up?
You're doing a fabulous job.
All right, if nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion to adjourn.
We have a motion on the table for adjournment. Do we have a second? Second by Stacy. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at seven oh nine.